Good afternoon, everybody. Really appreciate everyone coming out this afternoon. It's three oh one and it's time to start our Board of Commissions regular meeting. Thursday, September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I would like to have a call to order and roll companies.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks?
Here.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Saylor?
Here.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Under.
Thank you. I need approval of the agenda and a motion, approval and a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda. Second.
It's been properly moved in second and we have roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along, item number three, are there any public comments on the agenda items only? Very nice. I would like to have a motion for approval and a second for the approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from on second.
On second.
It's been properly moved and second, we have a roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
All of Saylor was in here last night.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along today. So down item five, new business. What we have on the new business today is approval of the FSS Action Plan. So we'll take that.
I have Stephanie, Stephanie, can you come up and give the board a summary on the changes to the FSS Action Plan, please?
Well, the changes to that FSS Action Plan were minimal, but they, HUD came out with a new final rule regarding it. So all FSS programs in the country had to make those appropriate changes. And that was that any adult household member could participate in the program. Doesn't have to be the head of household as, as normal. Also, there isn't just a five-year limit on that program. So we are able to offer those extensions if necessary. And then finally, we also updated our, since we're MTW, our program's a little different than the traditional FSS program where we offer goal-based incentives. So we updated that chart to increase the incentives that our participants can earn in that program. So once they become self-sufficient and move off the program, they'll be in a good financial, you know, they'll be stable financially, basically. Are there any questions?
What's in our package, what you're talking, is updated?
Yes, that's the updated one.
I have one quick question, and I don't, I don't know if you're the one to ask. In reading, for somebody who makes their way through the program and was able to access, you know, a lot of the incentives from there, do you know, is that money that then is like taxes income? Does that mean like an issue for somebody like, oh no, a bunch of money that hasn't been taxed?
Uh, don't believe so, right?
I don't believe so.
It's basically like if you earn, like with our youth bill, every week they get stipends, but it, there is this community accumulate to where they just get it all at once versus every time they reach a goal.
Yeah, from my experience, like in the traditional FSS program, it's not taxed.
They just get a check.
Uh, who said head of household, you find head of household compared to what it is?
So the head of household is a person named on the voucher, so she's the parent of a family. But if, say, the parent is disabled, they're exempt from MTW and can't participate in the FSS program anyway. So if they have adult household members who are in college, going to, working, then they can take advantage of this program. So when they move out of the house, then they will be financially stable. Or we have some head of households who are established, are not interested because they've already, you know, accomplished their goal. They might have their degree, they might have a decent job, and they're fine with where they're at. So like their adult household members, like their children, or it could be a spouse, it could be, yeah, just anyone eighteen and up that's in the household can take advantage of this program.
So is there a way, do they have to go through a certain thing to change that from original person to other person?
Well, if they're not involved, so you're saying if the head of household decides to not participate, because this, this is a voluntary program. So if the head of household is already involved in the program, then we can extend it to another participant in that household. It's just one per household.
What I'm saying, like you're saying, if somebody, like, go disabled or something, or can't form up to what you're asking them to do, but the person in the household can continue it, or not?
I guess like if they choose, so if, you know, say I, I have two people in my household, and maybe I have a seventeen-year-old, or not seventeen, it would be seventeen, I have a nineteen, twenty-year-old son. And I choose that I don't want to be involved in the shift program, I don't want to be involved in the FSS program, I don't want to go to the meetings, I don't want to participate in any of that. But I have a son who is working age, who does want to participate in that program. They then can participate in the program and accumulate the savings that it offers.
So this has to be a step before they get signed up for the program?
Um, not before they get signed up for a Section Eight or for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But they, once they're on the program for a year, once they're on our Housing Choice Voucher Program for a year, they can participate in shift, which is like the next step. So where, where they earn up to sixteen thousand dollars for like attending workshops and participating in different activities, increasing your credit score, going to school, working on homeownership. You know, it's just different categories that they, so it's a special program. And so it's just saying that will allow other members, other than who is the head of the voucher household, to participate in the program. Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, so we're gonna take this in three parts. First part, the approval of FSS Action Plan. So can I have a motion and a second? So.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second for the approval of the FSS Action Plan, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Yes.
Okay, uh, sir, thank you very much. Second one would be approval of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Urbana, Illinois and the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
We've had an agreement with the City of Urbana, and I'm gonna ask Sheila also to come up and say a few words about it. But we had an agreement with the City of Urbana, which expired, and it was to develop on a plot of land. And so with the upcoming PPA round for Ida, we're gonna, we want to renew that intergovernmental agreement to hopefully go into partnership for a development. And just some details about it, Sheila, would you like to come up and say? A few things?
Sure, thank you, Lily. Um, the City of Urbana has been approached by a developer to put an affordable housing development on Lehman and Washington, what used to be the Lehman Neighborhood Garden. That organization has dissolved, and it seems like a good time to put some housing units in there. They have met with the Housing Authority and Urbana to talk about financing and construction opportunities, density, design, that type of thing. So we feel positive that this is gonna move forward, but we, this is the first step in that process is to enter into this agreement with the Housing Authority.
And so it'll be, we're looking at about forty units of affordable housing, non-age restrictive, and then having a high, emphasis on low density. So not trying to do too many high rises or have too many people in one area, but just really focusing on providing more housing opportunities for families in Urbana.
Is there any questions up there?
Lily, what was the Ida funding that you just mentioned?
Oh, it's their rounding for, it's the PPA, the, for tax credits.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion for approval and a second for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Urbana, Illinois and the Housing Authority of Champaign County, Illinois.
I believe we approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Yes.
Okay, the final one would be approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the provision of environment, environmental review services to the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
Um, again, this is just renewing a current agreement we have with the City of Urbana to do environmental reviews for us. So whenever the Housing Authority purchases property or is redeveloping or something like that, Urbana conducts the environmental reviews. And so this is just us approving that we want this partnership to continue.
Okay. Can we have a motion for approval and a second?
I move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement to the provision of environmental review services to the Housing Authority of Champaign County.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ojchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhanser?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along, um, I'd like to hear from our executive director, has a lot to inform me about on her activities and for.
All right, um, so first news and announcements, the only big news I have is Stephanie has been, will be taking on a new role with the Housing Authority as the Director of MTW. So in this new role, she's gonna focus more on policy development and reporting, and not so much the case management type of activities day to day. So just wanted to congratulate Stephanie and thank you for the hard work. And then next, we have our Youth Bill Student of the Month, Christian, Ms. Siobhan, can you come up and say a couple of words about Christian?
Okay, our Youth Bill Student of the Month is Christian Marquez, and he was unable to be with us today. But staff voted for Christian because he's kind of like our silent horse. He started out with zero credits and then has worked his way steadily through to finally completing the graduation requirements this month. So he's a nice and respectfully young man, always comes and helps to kind of, to move like the food that we get from the food pantry off of the truck and back to the room. So doesn't say too much, but gets the work done.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the Spanish lesson. All right, our September Employee of the Month, we've got Mr. Vincent Anduho, our project manager. And a funny story is, we were searching like for a quote, we were trying to come up with a quote, and we were just unsuccessful. Because all we could come up with is like, well, he does everything, like he's everything. And so, um, thank you, Vince, Tamika, who is Vince's current new supervisor, who is gonna come up and say a couple of words about him.
And I'm gonna actually also post, uh, Siobhan, because we have her with them as a duo. And Vince, you can come on up as well, Siobhan, you can come on up as well. So yes, it has been an absolute pleasure working with Vince, he is the jack of all trades. He was recently promoted to our project development where he has taken over a lot of the things that's under construction and a lot of the things around Champaign County that we needed to do. He's also overseeing the Pioneer renovations and everything else that we made. But he is still supporting Youth Build as well, forty percent out of his time. And so that's one of the reasons why I did bring up Siobhan, because really, it's like, he probably feels like he has three supervisors. Versus just the one, so I did want to allow Siobhan to have some time as well.
So Vince is the reason why you see as many of the kids as you do in the program. Um, he is a supporter of all of the kids, and they've all, he's kind of become like a surrogate, or your uncle, or here. To the kids, but he advocates for the kids, he's a strong member of our team, I know his heart's in it, and we've been together since day one, so I adore you, Vince.
Would you like to have words?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you all, whoever nominated me and having the confidence in me, Lily, to have this position, be in this position, and the support that has been given so far. It's just been like three and a half months. Uh, it's, at some times it feels like I'm just taking in a lot, but it's just getting adjusted to the position. And just so grateful to be in development as well as still with Youth Build. And just, I take it as it comes. Uh, but again, I, I'd just like to thank everyone for having trust in me and believing in me.
Thank you, Vince.
And we've got a trophy for you, we changed our Employee of the Month trophy, so it's a little different now. So this, and we have a certificate and a gift card for you. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
And congratulations. Well deserved.
All right. Activities. All right, so last week, um, we attended, along with a couple of board members, the NARO Award, or not NARO Awards, the NARO Conference in San Diego, where HACC did receive seven awards, four of which were nominated for Awards of Excellence. And so we received those awards, I, I talked to the board about it last month, and we had our meeting. But we finally do have those awards, and we're gonna be spreading them across this wall somewhere. Um, so those awards were for the Transitional House for, for Youth Build, the Shift Program, the Healthy Beginnings Program, Housing Authority's Youth Build Program, Bridging the Gap Program, Leadership Development Series, and the Small Business Initiative. So that was exciting. And then.
This is a booklet that all the Holland agencies across the country were listed in there to honor for our agency to have seven awards, I think. Probably took the prize for that. So that'll be, you know, that'll be some of their publications and. It was really an honor for me to have the opportunity, other board members are there, to see this group of people, collective efforts from everybody to make this happen. And like I said, you're in there, this agency is in there with Holland agencies across the country, and so that's.
And we, we received a lot of positive feedback, a lot of different housing authorities were, you know, coming up to us, asking about, you know, our programs, or can we speak at their conferences? Or can we, you know, can their staff connect with us on just some of the innovative things that we're doing? And so that's really exciting to, when you go to a national conference and we're spotlighted like that to, you know, just be one of the best in the industry. So congratulations to the whole team. All right, next slide, please. Uh, we have an update on Sugar Creek Crossing. Uh, this project is ninety percent complete and will be finished in October. Uh, so the fire sprinkler systems have been installed and scheduled for testing. Uh, there's four-inch vinyl coves that needs, that needs to be installed throughout the units. Uh, the flooring is almost completely installed. Uh, there'll be four HCV units, five to seven closet doors and cabinets in the community room are still needing to be installed, and the security system is almost ready. So appliances have been delivered, and installation is at about seventy-five percent. Um, and then we have an update on the Envision Center next up. So demolition has begun, so we've gotten rolling all construction, demolition has began. The concrete slabs remain open and need to be filled. Uh, the plumbing is, they're working on the plumbing and the HVAC, and the contractor has framed for heightened ceilings in the foyer and entryway, as well as support beams and framing for demolition. And so to meet some of the city requirements, we kind of had to demo out the second floor of Pioneer, and so that's where we are with it. Um, and so they're gonna raise the ceiling basically, so it'll be higher ceilings in the building as opposed to having a second floor.
You still up target, hoping to get in there in November?
Yes, I'm target for November. Uh, we did host an all-staff meeting on September eighth, uh, where we focused on really educating employees on our benefits, um, as well as updating them on some changes that, that we've had. Uh, the leadership team gave some updates, uh, we had lunch catered in from Neil Street Blues, and it was just our quarterly meeting, the opportunity to just for staff to come together. We got a lot of positive feedback on the meeting, um, and just kind of really tried to put in perspective, bar hand benefits came in and really, you know, did a comprehensive overview of all the benefits and the perks of working for the Housing Authority, so. And we've got some photos from that. We had a fun team builder activity where we asked all the staff to explain their job without saying what they do. And so that was funny to hear everybody's explanation. So it was, it was a, a good day. Um, we also hosted a landlord informational. Uh, we had Hope Fair Housing come down, um, and they talked about the new Source of Income Law, how that would impact landlords. But we also did like an overview on the MTW voucher program, um, we dispelled some common myths, myths about the HCV program, um, explained to landlords how to get started on our program, talked about our landlord incentives that we have coming out. Um, and so overall, we had about thirty attendees, and it was really successful, we got a lot of positive feedback from the landlords. Um, and so we hope to do something again in November where we bring landlords together again, and we'll be doing an inspection, HQS Inspection Bootcamp, um, just educating them on, you know, what it's like to go through the inspection, so.
So landlord, you, uh, you said, um, January first, uh, there would be a new amendment, I'll give you proof, sir, that you can have more places for people to move, like a new one, they are, they town, they never ran to, go there, come. That would be one place, because they have it for forty years?
Yes, so the, the new law will prevent, hopefully prevent landlords from discriminating against people who have vouchers. Um, and so I know the City of Champaign says that they'll be doing some, uh, some information on how they'll enforce it, um, but they can't.
That place is a beautiful place, it has a golf court, it has a swimming pool, whoever moves in there, I hope they don't tear that place up, because it's beautiful. I mean, I walked in there and I was like, I didn't almost hear it count.
Yeah, that's it.
The lady said that they're gonna be opening up for the people with low income, I said, okay.
That's awesome, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I hope that, um, you know, more landlords will be cooperative. The ones who came, um, to the Lunch and Learn with us, though, a lot of them, some, we had a group of people who maybe had not rented before to the, the voucher program. Um, and I think it was helpful for them to learn, like, you know, the process of it. So a lot of it is just, you know, not necessarily, um, not wanting to do it, but just a mindset of we've never done it, so, you know. And so hopefully, with the new law going into effect, um, we can guide and support landlords through the process. And we also have some really great incentive programs for those who may, you know, have some hesitation about renting to voucher program holders. Uh, we've got some really good incentives that should help them.
I hope that we kind of maybe enforce the tenants about keeping up the people's property, because I know the property, we are out there in, what, by State Road, what's the name of those ones out there?
Providence?
Yeah. That property, hallelujah, that we need to make sure we enforce about the residents keeping up the people's property, because that's, uh, I mean, they're calling it a small, completely green now, completely green? That like pretty much kind of, because it's how, like, how it looks, I don't know.
Yeah, Housing Authority doesn't manage that one, um, but if there are any complaints that people have, we do have a good relationship with the company that manages, and we can work on that with them. Um, so here are some photos from the landlord Lunch and Learn, um, that we put. And then on next slide, we just wanted to say thank you to United Way, HACC received in total a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars, uh, for the, or through the Victory Over Violence Grant. And on the next slide, I have some details. Oh, next slide, that one. This one, it did go back. Sorry. So for the Victory Over Violence Grant, um, our MTW department received thirty-three thousand, two hundred to, for the program to create leaders and restore Oakwood Trace. So some of the things that we'll be doing is serving youth who are age six to twelve in the Oakwood Trace community with programming, um, beautification initiatives, leadership, uh, leadership development for the residents and the youth who live there, domestic violence awareness and prevention trainings, and ring doorbells. So hopefully, uh, this funding from United Way will help us improve the community over at Oakwood Trace. And then also, uh, the Youth Build Program was awarded seventy-five thousand dollars for their Reaching Further Initiative, um, which is, um, to engage innovative recruitment strategies, uh, to serve additional youth in Urbana and rental. Right now, we serve a lot of Champaign youth, um, and so we really want to be able to expand outward. It's not that we can't, but, um, just to be more specific about, uh, our marketing and our targeting to that, uh, those specific communities. And then six, also, we'll be serving six, uh, youth who already have high school diplomas, um, but may still be considered at risk. So with other certificates such as NTCER, Ocean Flaggers, Forklift, uh, First Aid and CPR training, um, and any others, you know, workforce certificates that we can. And then some Youth Build Program updates, uh, Mental Toughness was this week, September twenty-sixth to thirtieth. Uh, we will take approximately twenty to twenty-five, uh, new members. Um, and then for the current cohort, well, I'll go on over there on the next slide, um, the, oh, can you go back a slide to, Jean, I'm sorry, go back two slides. There we go. Youth Build also was awarded a four hundred and five thousand dollar grant, uh, through the Illinois Youth Build Coalition to serve an additional twenty-five youth over the next year. So that's a big win for them. Um, and then the Illinois Youth Build Coalition is like the state, um, the state collaborative for Youth Build. And so, uh, they actually reached out to us and asked us to apply because the program has been so successful, so that's pretty cool to see, too. Now we can go forward, thank you. Um, and so on the, on the current cohort, um, some data that we have, we have fifteen out of seventeen high school diplomas so far. The last two who are still needing a high school diploma, were here today, uh, in the storage room, working diligently. So we should hopefully see some high school diplomas from them in the next month or two. Um, and then sixteen of the seventeen youth have received Flagger certificates, fifteen of the seventeen have received Forklift certificates, fifteen of the seventeen have received CPR and First Aid training. Um, and so graduation will be held on December ninth, uh, at noon, so we'll be sending out more information to the board about that. And that's all I have, and I'll just ask Miguel to come up and talk about the financials.
Thank you. So as usual, uh, I gotta mention that disbursements done in August, we dispersed two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, I just want to mention that, uh, when I, these figures, when I mention disbursements, these are actual checks or, or, uh, direct deposits. Well, they're deposits to vendors. We also have, uh, payroll, for example, which is an average between eighty and eighty-three thousand dollars per payroll. Uh, those are actually direct to our account, and we have two, uh, usually two, two payrolls in a month. Once in a while, we have three because we, uh, pay bi-weekly. We, I would like to mention, uh, the most important disbursements in, done in the month of August. There was a thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighteen, uh, payment to the University of Illinois. And those are moved towards scholarships for nine participants. That was actually the most significant disbursement. We had a payment to Bedrock Consultants for twelve thousand, seven seventy-four, and those are basically management fees that we're paying for Oakfield, Newton, and Sugar Creek now. Uh, we are subcontracting them for property management. A couple of, uh, actually two checks for ten and twelve thousand dollars to West Guard Insurance Company, which is basically for our work comp insurance. to West Guard Insurance Company, which is basically for our work company insurance. Those were the most, uh, important, uh, disbursements during the month. Uh, there's also, I wanna talk about the, the real versus budget. And there's a graph of, uh, our blended components, the revenue, uh, versus the, the total operating cost. As can be seen graphically, uh, we, usually Washington and steer are the ones that have the, the highest margins, uh, percentage-wise, so there's, do have margins. But I guess the most important thing is that all of them are in, in blue, meaning the, the blue bar is, uh, bigger than the orange one, which is the one for the expenses, the orange one. Of course, the magnitudes are a little different. You cannot compare, uh, the size of Maple Grove Manor to, to steer, but proportionally-wise, we're going on, on the right direction. Then, if you could please put the next one. The same thing for the discrete components, and now Oakfield is, has actually really started to, to have more revenue than, than expenses. There's some inter-funds that we're gonna start collecting back, because at the very beginning, these developments, uh, have expenses, but don't have money to pay them, so we, we're paying out of Housing Authority, but, uh, then we'll be recovering those inter-funds when their, when their cash flow is good. Haven, definitely, the one in the middle, Haven Marketplace, has a very, uh, a very good margin. Actually, they, Haven converted, uh, their construction loan to a permanent loan this year. And there's another payment of, uh, fifty thousand dollars per month. And actually, it doesn't, doesn't make a scratch to, to, so, I mean, it's, it's cash flowing pretty well, that, uh, that property. If you could please put the third one. So basically, the last, uh, the last graph represents, uh, the real versus budget in terms of, uh, revenue, uh, total cost, and net operative, net operative income. So basically, the first, uh, set of, of bars is the, the total income. And we're slightly under budget, two-point-five percent, which isn't really, uh, too significant. We're talking about three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Those numbers are actually reflected in the, in the last, uh, uh, worksheets that are presented, the ones that said, uh, budget to actual comparison. The next set is the total cost, and there, actually, the costs are slightly under budget, so it counteracts the, the effect of the, of the revenue being slightly under budget. So, on that case, we're talking of, uh, two-point-zero under the, under the budget. So that actually helps compensate the, the effect. And, and that can be seen, uh, actually, better on the third chart, because the two, the two first ones and the second group of, of, of bars, they actually all summarize on the, on that third one. So, slightly under what was expected as net operative income, but, uh, almost there, almost on target. If, if there's any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel.
Okay, uh, do you have a motion for approval in a second for the two of the financial reports? In time for the move, the second roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Ice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Otaski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turpul?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Manon?
Yes.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
I think he has. Has non-agenda rights?
Non-agenda.
Good evening, everyone. My name's James H. Jim Hayes, Jr. I've been an advocate for the Champaign County Housing Authority since I don't know when. They've been doing a good job in the past, and they're still doing an outstanding job. Uh, I was on the Urbana City Council for about twelve years. Mayor pro temped twelve years. And the Housing Authority thought I did such a good job advocating for the Housing Authority when they came to the city, that, uh, they named a six-plex apartment over in Urbana after me. Uh, James H. Hayes, Jr. Homes. And right now, I know four of the members on the, uh, Authority Board, Ms. Timber, McFarland, Dr. Henry, Rippon, Fox. And you're still doing an outstanding job. But you need to know that, most of the time, when people hear about the Champaign County Housing Authority, they hear about Champaign, Urbana, and they don't hear about the other places that, that you guys do an outstanding job. And I want you to know that some of the happiest people, when it comes to public housing, are the folks up there around to a Yonan Place. I'll go by there every once in a while, just to be nosy. But... I enjoy the idea of seeing people happy and enjoying where they're living. I could go up to Yonan Place and not even ask a question or let them know why I'm there, and they would tell me, "If you're looking for a place, you won't find it here." "So we love it here, and we're gonna be here till we die." And I thought, I thought that was a pretty great comment. And then last year, I worked with the, uh, Champaign, Urbana Extension, when they went to each one of the, uh, apartments that, uh, the people were living in up at Yonan Place, and, uh, helped them plan a garden. And I thought, I thought that was wonderful. They took a lot of pride in that, and I enjoyed it. You know, working with the people from the, uh, University of Illinois Extension. So, I just wanna come up and say thank you for the good job you guys have been doing down through the years. I'll still be advocating for you, to my remaining years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As, on behalf of the board and myself, uh, Mr. Hayes, I just wanna thank you very much for those kind words. Uh, Mr. Hayes is one of the first people that I met when I moved here in December of nineteen ninety-eight. And he's, uh, been a positive influence, uh, throughout this community, including Mantoul. I know when I, he was on the City Council, I was assistant principal at Prairie School over in Washington now, Dr. Preston Williams School. And whenever we had a problem or something, I could walk across the street, because he had a home over there, and he'd come over. He's, he's, he's been a pillar in this community. He's a retired military officer in the Air Force. He's been a teacher and dean, he's had several careers. And I saw him a couple of weeks ago way up in, at Haymaker. I said, "What are you doing way out here?" Being empowered. And so, you know, he, he, he's here today, and I'm so happy that you came to say those words. And we wanna continue to do, the board and the staff wants to continue to be, uh, be in the forefront of what we do, because this is our business. And, uh, Ms. Washington has excellent staff, can't give them enough credit, because, uh, I think it's, it's, uh, speaks for itself, just coming back this week. Some of us was a little delayed getting back home. Not me, thank goodness. But anyway, uh, it was a fine trip out there, and, uh, just wanna say thank you. Once again, Mr. Hayes, I go by, I was over by the building, you picked the building that was named after you Monday, because my wife, Delores, was on jury duty on Monday, and we had to, we had to... We, we needed to get back, and we got back, thankfully. But I was, there was three parking lots for jurors to park in. And so, one of them was not for twenty-two. I said, "That's a long way from the courthouse." But it happened to be in the parking lot by the Urbana Police Station. And right there is your, your big famous name on the side of it. So without further ado, I just wanna say thank you for those that were in San Diego. Thank you for those people that was back home, working, yelling gently, keep, keeping the torch going forward. And, uh, that's, I wanna say thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? I know this is out of order.
No. Go ahead.
First, uh, I also enjoyed, uh, trips to Washington, San Diego. And I wanted to say, my comment is to congratulate the staff on the work that you do. Uh, I was a newbie at these events, and I had many, many, many people come up to me and talk to me about how outstanding this Housing Authority is. And that is a tribute to all of you worker. They know who you are, uh, and I was honored to be affiliated with an organization such as this. And the, I won several awards, which was outstanding. My question is, Lily, will we send a press release out?
Yes, we will. Yeah, we will.
So that the community can learn about. Because one of the things that they emphasized at both of the conferences was, we need to tell our story again and again and again. And this is a great story to tell right here.
Yes, absolutely, we will, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all already know, uh, that all of the vendors will be contacted. They said they talked to me the other day. They yelled, "Say it." No, it was a great experience, there were a lot of, um, really awesome workshops there. And I think, being a younger, um, commissioner, people don't always take me as seriously as they should. Shortly after, shortly, shortly after the meeting, I figured that out, but anyways. And so, amongst, uh, speaking with some of the other younger commissioners across the nation, it's pretty evident that it's becoming a much more prominent, um, position to be on, or as commissioners for housing, it's already anywhere, small, big, and medium, whatever. And so, uh, I'm really proud to be a part of this. And every time I tell someone, they think that it's like the coolest thing ever. I think it's the coolest thing ever. So, telling someone I was appointed by the mayor makes me feel really good. But the staff are really the people that make it work, and you guys know that. I try and tell you, I try and say hi to you whenever I see you. And, um, I work with you in the community other ways, so it's just, it's really great to know that I can see all parts of it throughout the process.
Well, you know, I miss going. And in November, I'll be back with you guys again. I'll go on a little road here, and you know, the politicians, but I'll be back again.
We missed, we've missed you.
But not even, you know, I haven't lost what I've been doing, because I was over to Washington Square yesterday, meeting with Lily. But, uh, for traveling tour, I haven't been doing here lately, but I will get back to that. That's about it. I was doing, it's a great place, and I was praising Lily over there yesterday to attend. So it's like, "Oh, you guys want to do what y'all have here, do ya?"
I would just like to add one, uh, take one more minute just to, uh, mention those seven awards, to title them. Uh, the first one was the HACC Youth Build Transitional Housing Programs. The second one was the HACC Bridging the Gap Project. The third one was HACC Leadership Development Series. The, just the third one, or fourth one was HACC Small Business Initiative. The other one was, the fourth one or fifth, Healthy Beginnings Initiative. And, let's see. How the Authority of Champaign County Youth Build. And the last one was the SHIFT Program. So, seven awards takes a whole lot of people, a whole lot of staff, a whole lot of energy, and so, that's worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, is there any more comments that anyone would like to make? I don't think there's any reason to go into closed session this evening.
No.
So, uh, I will ask for a motion in a second for adjournment. If they promptly move a second roll call?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Ice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Otaski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turpul?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Manon?
Yes.
During the three forty-seven.